We are. The one we found that may without any word, we are. Available person. Line with the cell. Unfortunately, none of our screens are working today, so can't see any of the things that might be done. Start over the approval of the mess. December eight, right, second. Second, my damn, I always made fun of it. All but the paper.
Aye.
Oppose. Here.
If they stay here with the hairline.
First, I have on the agenda is. Timothy Cole, Senator, and then on statement, four away, Farsbridge, Cheryl, New York. Presentation three rounds south division. Former sweet vote in the state of seventy-three Malius on classification, we expect the anchor twelve. Next map one zero nine, they have zero one, there's zero one point. So you introduce yourself, tell us who you are, where you live, like, tell us.
Certainly, names Pat Reynolds with Ian Uzian Romans Lance Rane, representing the African subdivision. So I guess with your screen sound, you guys like copies of maps?
We can have pretty bad though, yeah, we can hopefully do that then.
Okay. So really, just to start things out, we're splitting up this original parcel of thirty-three and a half acres. They're looking to go from one into three parcels. We're gonna have two five acre lots and one, excuse me, one twenty-three and a half acre lot. This is, um. You know, as far as, uh. We got existing drive on the twenty-three acre lot. There's an existing acre lot, or I'm sorry, an existing drive off the sweet road. Which we're kind of working through right now to see if we can use that one, or if we'd have to put a new driveway cut on that road. And then, um, lot two A does not have a drive yet, but we're also working with a DOT on. You know, whether or not we have to stay distances, uh, driveway on that lot.
That's too late.
Too late, right? Yes. Yeah, there's no existing, uh, the only existing driveway for this lot is coming in through two B, there's an existing waiting garage on that lot. The only other improvements really going on here is they've added a garden out there. Uh, they moved an existing shed out by the garden.
There were no houses. So then they got three outlines of the property.
That's correct, no houses.
Not bad, this dotted area. Did that dotted line go away a long time ago, is it going away as current this?
It went away a while ago, it was on our original subdivision map when we created these parcels showing that it was, uh, at that time, it was parcel one.
Just to carry on, so you got any future thoughts on what to do with this, you got this subdivision?
Uh, so it is gonna be homes. Uh, the applicant is looking to build a house on lot two A, I believe it is his son, who would be building a house on two B. And then they have, uh, a friend of theirs that would be, uh, building a house on two C, so it'd be three new houses.
My son wants to keep a final acre parcel for their home if they want to be.
Yeah, yeah, don't put a home on that.
When do we hear about the same distance?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I could, uh, I could definitely get that in the next couple of weeks here.
So I think I would not want to, um. To build subdivision, so we know if there's side distance, because. I'm sure we don't, we don't want to be or build a lot.
Understandable. Existing driveway that goes on the side of. Uh, to be dealt with, is that? The plan to use it for both? Two C and two B?
No, so two B would be using, uh, the gravel drive coming off of Isaka Turnpike.
So where the house used to be.
Yes.
Down there, okay, yeah.
They've made some. They've made some improvements to that existing drives. Mainly just accepting. Oh, I'm sorry, no one.
We need a driveway car on that. We go there, we just assume that. Your will off the existing. Right away. Sweet home.
For two B? Even with the existing driveway on?
I think we need confirmation that's an existing driveway part of the DOT.
Okay.
Sweet road, the family mode, yes. Well, yeah.
Sounds like you already know that. There's no guarantee on her cut of those, but you're already working on all that. Um, and you can confirm that the, the lot mentions and acreage and all that stuff needs the code for, um.
Yes.
Sorry?
Yep.
Um, I checked and it needs the comprehensive plan, um. Ideas? Is there a? Do you know what stream this says that runs through here, and is that a name stream? Things that go along with it?
You can question about the tributary. Probably goes in three walls.
Yeah, that's as far as I can tell. Yes.
There's a lot of tricks of.
There's a. Right, remember the old, um, for the existing per cutting to lot two B, there's a W? In the circle?
So that would be a symbol for a well.
Oh, wow.
Existing.
Because they go both, all of these lots would be subject.
Yeah.
Are you got regulation test yet?
So we haven't done any tests, uh, usually on lots of five acres and above. We just put a note on there that it's not an approved building lot, and then at the time when they go to bill. Um, they can't get the building permit until they have that approved subject design.
I thought that the order to file the math, you got to have, um. The county.
So we, so we do, uh, I don't mean to interrupt you. So we did reach out to the county health department, and as long as we have that note on there, they're willing to stamp the maps. Um, I have an email confirmation of that I can provide.
He said no.
I think that's correct.
No, looks good. Um, I had a question about the way the secret was spelled out, um. So on the second page, number five. Um, consistent with five B, consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, we checked N A, but I, yes.
Okay, it was just, uh, I myself, I guess I was not familiarized with the comprehensive plan.
I think for sure, um. Then eight B and C, it talks about public transportation and pedestrian or bicycle routes. I think that means that, like, is it on a bus line? Or are there bike lanes, you know, or sidewalks and stuff, so you might check yes, but you might wanna double check. The fine print of the document that helps you answer these questions, make sure.
Certainly, yeah, I was, uh, I was kind of thinking things along the lines of, um, less fan now, like Uber, stuff like that is, uh, public. I guess I was taking that as transportation alternatives over driving yourself, but you can see now the.
Well, there, I believe there's a guy who's document for, like, each question, and it'll walk you through, and I know some of them will auto populate if you use the app or.
Right, okay.
Subject needed to be, then down on thirteen A, and this is more of a question, I think, for Doug, um. Wetlands, does a portion of the site of proposed action or lands joining the proposed action contain wetlands or otherwise regulated by federal, state, or local, and it was checked, yes, so. Um, do we have to do anything with that?
No, well, we really don't, because this action of the subdivision isn't. Isn't a building situation, okay, um, but when they go to bill, then they, they should get the essential.
That's something to be aware of if you haven't, um, gotten up to speed on the new regulations yet. So those comments that I made on one, these should would be the same for the other, yeah.
Okay.
Do you, you have a question, I think, and. The.
Numbering.
Re-subdivision.
Yeah, so. Because it'll be two, two separate. Maps, the, the, that's what we're gonna look at, it's okay.
Yeah.
If it's one, and then it's one A, one B.
Yeah.
This really has to be sort of the new subdivision, because it's not all in one bed. Um, so it's going to be, even though it was a lot two. It's not going to be like, this would be like lot one, lot two, lot three.
So like a, wait, okay.
And then it would have that, it's different. And if you wanted to know the recent division of former, whatever the other map was called, I think.
So, yeah, I think if, uh. Maybe it's still something a little shorter.
It doesn't really matter, as long as. When you come here, that was gonna be like first law one, you know?
Right.
Well, maybe not everyone, but maybe me. So county. Had said they didn't want to see this unless something was. So. It's sort of how we do, and the next meeting is finally some. And then when that actually. Um, so. I mean, it probably was a couple of hearing, like, two weeks, or two meetings out anyway, since now he has to come, you know, it's a few things, that would be good plenty of times to get it.
Sounds great, yeah, um, would you like the DAF or vice?
That, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
That's so many funny.
The county or our meeting?
Our meeting. Still after the county meeting.
They have a motion for volume, sorry.
Make a motion to set a public hearing date for this project on. October twenty, twenty.
On seven. There's a second, my bridge, made by your second back, which all favored?
Aye.
That was true.
That's all they have.
Yeah, that's all.
That's African Anderson and Catherine Payne, two oh sixty Chase Street, East Syracuse. Initials presentation to the subdivision lot one sweet road and a year. Only application RA tax man one oh nine dash. Point four one, dash zero one.
Hey, uh, again, Pat Reynolds, Ian Uzian Romans, here to represent the African. So this one, very similar to the last one, it is a, uh, two lot subdivision, they're splitting up this original parcel. Uh, originally, it's six, thirty-six point four acres, we're gonna have one parcel that's five point one, and one that's thirty-one point two, change. On this one, too. They're, uh, the Africans intending to build a house on lot one B. It's gonna be in the location, the end of this gravel driveway that they've got down in here. I was told that they had county approvals for that driveway, I will see what, uh, proof of that I can get for the next meeting. Um, on lot one A, there's an existing gravel driveway, I know that was put in before the original, uh, split. I'll see what I can do, if I can't get proof of approvals, I'll get site distances on that driveway as well. Then.
Are they gonna sell that one?
Yes, I'm sorry, uh, their plans are to sell lot one A, that five acre parcel.
Only comment on this one that says it is the same for the others is, will there need to be anything done about encroachment of those, of that, the Bristol's property and some of their?
So I brought it to the applicant's attention, um, I'm not sure what their. I haven't had a discussion with them since then about what they're gonna be doing about it, um.
Does this process, they're wired to be done with.
The program change or?
And then that.
And we look through all this, so who can bring? Can you hear that from him? There's a shed, and look, we just shed an appropriate. From our point of view, and probably what we're excited about.
I'm a little confused about that, why are these separated from lot one B?
Those are separate to begin now.
They were separate to begin, sorry, okay. So we're just looking at this. Let's just look at thing. Here. Schedule of oral hearing.
Anyone, all right, you want me to do this? Right, um, I like most of the set in public hearing for, um, this project, um, back October twenty.
Seven, just a second. Anybody here second by the? Motion. Thank you. Sorry, your visit in collaboration with not being able to. Were saver and senior. Joining classification, so you be tax man zero nine three. And zero one, and zero five, point one. And. Who's our seeker? Chris, you would be saying?
I, I don't think the applicant has anything to add to its application unless this board has some questions regarding local matters related to the application.
The only thing, I, I would bring up is the, um, we're gonna have a condition about the couple. Yeah, and, and I, and it will be part of the resolution, and. It's pretty much what you had proposed, um, and it was discussed with length, and it's just gonna, just gonna address the season. We can, pardon, nothing else, it's all burned in, um.
That's absolutely fine, the applicant. What do you want, or you put it on the record tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll incorporate our, incorporate on behalf of the African a reportable document for council's review for this board.
Exactly, that's what, that's.
That's what you're saying, okay.
On the second page. The first paragraph, uh, had worked through, certainly, certainly, granted, we had proposed resolution that was delivered in advance, all board members, yeah?
Yeah.
And then everyone got that, and reviewed it in advance.
Yeah.
The decision regarding party farm and review.
Wow. And we got that, so.
Appears up in here, and it was down here, it's the same, we're doing. Um, doesn't prove.
Yeah, I think I already, for others, it has access, add more of the, you know, gather. They got a little bit, uh, this is so, just whole, so paragraphs, it was just, she did, she's not sound. And I just want to confirm, um, the date of our, of the, what last month? Eight twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, remind you I've done that, the last date of the, etc.
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Jamie, I got, I got, of course, part of my notes says that, we see it here, maybe obviously, as your voice. That, uh, every senior apartments would maintain the sidewalks.
Um, so it's, you can put that in separately. But I believe it's part of the, um. Agreement.
It will be part of the agreement, if it is part of the, the resolution, I just asked that who the sidewalks on our property and that sidewalk along the. Are you speaking of the sidewalk on Bridge?
So, so there's. Well, which sidewalk, sidewalk?
Along the bridge, sure.
Yeah, so, but are you, are you maintaining that?
Yes, yes, we are.
I think you would bet in there.
That's right, yeah. Is there?
Don't have.
The town, once we have this agreement in place, which spells out more than just the sidewalks, but the stormwater. And the town is in agreement that, when I provide it, I'm gonna show you that existing easement that's in favor of the town, the town will terminate that easement. Because it will now be a private. Stormwater, of course, the town has the rights to step in in the agreement, like we've talked about in the meeting, which you're review, but. There's an easement in place in favor of the town for stormwater.
So, so the, um, the proposal of a resolution is, this is what it means, the easements for stormwater, sidewalks, usually they can. Booked down, we have candidates, running as a benefit, the town is presented, direction, this board must be reviewed and approved this time by a senior attorney in town and attorney, if I have a background here on the firm's office. That are these, I mean, I think that may cover it.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I will show you, I will give you, I'm fine with it, I, I.
I think.
I just want you to know that I will be looking to terminate the existing town easement once this easement is in place.
Yeah.
Because this, this agreement will cover it.
Yes, we're trying to have a claim for it, share with it, um, and those final documents as well.
Okay.
Last page, last sentence.
Well.
I'm three four for the U B. Page ten.
We scheduled right.
See. Sure.
You say there. Well, they were a short, it's an almost good action. Um, so we're gonna answer these questions, as we've done before, there were small impact they incurred, and, um. Appreciate that embellished, you know, based on some of these conditions as to why it is now a small effect, so, first question, will the proposed action create a material conflict? And adopt the land use plan result? So, no, because if this, there's a P U D, so it's. Um, will the proposed action result in changes in use or intensity from use of land? Yes. It, it will, yeah, but it's, um. Now, it's a small, uh, small, that's just, if the swim is followed, right? Will the proposed action appear to character or quality of existing?
Well, I will say, though, I wanted to say, excuse me, I mentioned before, I think the architecture is very attractive. But I still feel like, and I'm not post project, but I still feel like it doesn't really represent the, um. The architecture of the surrounding area very well, but I think it's an attractive building nonetheless. I had to get that out.
Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environment of characters, does it have the establishment of a third world by the actual area? Would the proposed action result in an adverse change to the existing level of traffic or a time existing infrastructure for mass transit by for long term? And, uh, the applicants do revisit the. Uh, traffic study, correct? And that's been, yes, uh, updated and considered satisfactory. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and investment for a reasonably available energy, activation or renewable energy opportunities?
But if it fails to, so again, increase, but it's only a positive thing if it fails to prepare to be sure.
The second, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies, or public or private wastewater treatment? Small, small. Will the proposed action bear the character or quality of historic architectural architecture over aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as weapons, water parties, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? With the same, you'll be.
When it's small, first we talked about it, it's soft.
So then it's all been handled with the. Will the proposed action create hazard to environmental resources or different? No. Uh, all of these questions, having been answered, no, it's small, and chairman, I'm interested in motion for a definite secret declaration.
I saw. David, maybe someone to make the name.
I think that was.
Said you. If.
I made the motion.
Second. She made my Davis and my head. Negative scene for the equation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
This is the proposed resolution.
Any more resolution? To answer review of all the items for part two of the S C A F, negative secret declaration. This for the resolution will follow, this is for public reading, support of the public property. And all the work that is out of cap of this, and. This is the resolution to approve the site plan last dated August twenty-seventh, twenty-five. With the body of notice, I appreciate your purple awareness of the following findings and conditions. Town of the Indian US Town Board has a plan unit development plan for this property. Project in June of the twenty twenty-five, being the home secretary, senior partners. A requirement of the acreage B U D legislation, in order to town, man, you have to approve the site plan for the project. As part of the site plan approval, this board reviewed the S C A F applicant dated December twenty-seven, twenty-four. And have to review of all items for part two of the S C A F, has issued a negative declaration for the project on this day, September twenty-second, twenty-five. This board is reviewing the Anadi County planning board referral dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, which recommended the following non-conditions, all of which, this board makes a condition of this approval. Number one, the applicant must continue to coordinate hyperspeed access plans for the Anadi County Department of Transportation. Any mitigation is may be determined by this department must be completed. Number two, the applicant must continue to coordinate wastewater plants with the Anadi County Department of Water and Water Protection. Any mitigation is may be determined by the department must be completed. Three, any proposed development on a property that may contain New York State jurisdictional wetlands. Must obtain a negative parcel jurisdictional determination from the New York State D E C. Or coordinate provisional D E C staff to determine whether they require. This board held a public hearing on the site plan in August twenty. Or heard the founders of the father, all of which comments have been considered by this board. There were specific questions and matters raised in the August twenty-fifth meeting relating to graphic study, fire safety, and smoke stability. Or subsequently heard and considered a presentation about the possibility of new adjacent slope at September eighth meeting. And how it's being addressed in the construction of the project. Fire departments review of this project has determined that the access is provided, other fire preventive measures proposed. As part of this project, sufficiently the applicable codes, those findings of the fire department are part of this record. Clients with any requirements to the fire department, this may be required for addition of this approval. The traffic study for the project was updated and found to be satisfactory. At the request of the planning board, each of the issues raised in the public hearing. Were reviewed by the planning board engineer, as reported that the issues now been satisfactorily addressed by the applicant in his plan present. This project includes several easements that are critical to the success of this project as relates to connectivity. Between the adjacent Brookdale property of this project, additionally, the right of the applicant to enter upon the premises of the adjoining Brookdale property. Is important so that sidewalks along Haker Road can be completed as a requirement of part of the project. Project also requires shared stormwater easement between Brookdale property and this project. It has been represented to this board, and the Brookdale property owners have been favorable to the easements as presented. The proposed easements for all these matters have been supplied to this board and conditions relating to same or are this. There have been significant discussions regarding the dedication of a proposed road between the Brookdale property and this project. This included discussion of whether that road should be a dedicated road or an easement between parcels. The issue of the road dedication is purview of the town board consultation of the town engineer and town highways superintendent. At this time, it appears that the town board is in favor of road dedication. Accordingly, this project is approved with the condition that the town accept the proposed roadway as dedicated town road. However, that does not come to fruition, the applicant must be turned to this board for further discussion. As to any terms and conditions of a shared roadway use for this project. This board requested. That as part of this approval, the applicant clarified the approval of this for the intent of the applicant to supply. Portion of the project is senior housing and such has sent forth in PUD. The definition of same attached here to a six today is susceptible to this board, is largely following federal guidelines for senior housing. Because this is integral to the EOD requirements, which are future compliance for all subsequent orders. In condition for reporting of a covenant to run with the land is a condition of this. Here are the conditions, consideration of above findings, this approval is made with the following conditions, one. The applicant must work in with the town board for dedication of the access road shown on the site plan to town advantage. Pleasure on the road and dedication must occur before a certificate of occupancy or compliance may be issued by the. Two, the easements for stormwater sidewalks and utilities between Brookdale and the applicant. And as running to the benefit of the town, as presented and drafted, this board must be reviewed and approved as funded. By the planning board attorney and town attorney, found the Anadi County Clerk's office. The proposed road dedication to town advantage must be approved, rated by the town board. Covenant relating to senior housing, languages attached here to and associated. Must be finalized and submitted to review and approval by the planning board attorney and found the Anadi County Clerk. As the covenant running with the land. By the conditions of the Anadi County Planning Board has set forth, both must be compliant with. Six, any conditions of the fire department must be complied with. Seven, all requirements of the planning board engineer in relation to the SWIP must be complied with. Eight, this project must be completed in a single phase and nine, the applicant must comply with all conditions required. Schedule A. Senior covenant draft language. Covenant to run with the land and to run to the benefit of the town advantage, actually for the fulfillment of the PUD. At least eight percent of its occupied units will be occupied by at least one person fifty-five years of age or older. For purposes hereof, occupied unit means one. A dwelling unit that's actually occupied by one or more persons on the date that this provision is in effect, or. Two, a temporarily vacant unit if the primary occupant has resided in the unit during the past year and intends to return on a periodic basis. For purposes of hereof, occupied by at least one person fifty-five years older. Means that on the date that the housing design for persons who are fifty-five years from older is claimed. One, at least one occupant of the dwelling unit is fifty-five years of age or older. Two of the dwelling unit is temporarily vacant, at least one of the occupants immediately prior to the date on which that unit was temporarily vacant. Was fifty-five years of age or older. That was standing foregoing to the contrary, since this is newly constructed housing. The requirements set forth herein will not be applicable, applicable to at least twenty-five percent of the units are occupied. The above covenant is intended to comply with the Federal Fair Housing Act for senior housing. This covenant is intended to clarify the term senior housing set forth in the PUD. All their covenants, restrictions, and requirements of PUD dated June eleventh, twenty twenty-five are in full force of effect until. A motion to the resolution.
Make a motion, make that the resolution.
Saying as I did. By my favor.
I.
All opposed.
Well, I would like to say, before we, can we get a log on? I guess, okay, I didn't know if it was separate for this little.
Or the whole thing, the whole thing, so none of this major that I just.
I'm. And this was just my perspective, but when the project came before us, it was talked about as senior housing, like the whole times. And then we got to the very end, working through it for a really long time, back and forth, and. You know, when it came to working out some of the details of both senior housing meant, it all of a sudden had all these caveat that. It wasn't actually senior housing, it was seniors and all these other things, right, like. The twenty percent of this, and until it's eight, until it's twenty-five percent full, it doesn't have to be, and then we worked through a lot of this, but I found. That that was a little bit misleading from the, the get go.
Initially.
Initially, um, and we're still kind of, at least I'm still working through PUDs in this town. And so, I don't know if some of that needed to be worked tighter with the town board at the time of the PUD, because we reviewed the PUD. But then, then, so, I.
I do think that, um, it was a learning curve, and, um, a lot of this, uh, ultimately, the only thing that really wasn't. Wasn't defined really well, was the senior housing, the rest was all language, I mean, it's in sentence, if you, if you, the town board, that would have lost. Put it in, so, I, I think our session kind of somehow interpret that gap, that hit a bit off. Okay, so, yeah, some mischievous.
I think for, it's a lesson for all of us going forward to be more, more.
I will say, just for clarification, of. Motion. For approval of the project with all of the. Is there any question about that?
No, I, that was my mistake, the way I said it, I didn't wanna say it throughout time, voiceful.
Short favor of the approval of the decision. It's a good approval with, um. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. She very, thank you very much. Uh, absent any further. Business, we will be prepared for, for the.